I call this meeting to order. Rock call.
Councilmember Maria Cecilia Cruz.
Present.
Councilmember Thaddeus El de la Olla.
Present.
Councilmember Matias Rosales.
Present.
Councilmember Gloria Torres.
Present.
Councilmember Javier Vargas.
Present.
Vice Mayor Luis Cabrero.
Present.
Mayor Nieves Raydell.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Councilmember Rosales, you have a leader.
Glad to lead.
Pastor Jacob Miller, would you please come to the podium? Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me. If you would, bow your heads with me. I'm gonna read a verse as I pray this over the city. It comes from Psalms, chapter sixty-five, verses nine. It says, "You take care of the earth and water it and make it rich and fertile. The river of God has plenty of water. It provides a bountiful harvest of grain for you, and I have ordered it." And I pray that verse over this city, Lord, that you have made the grounds here in San Luis very fertile. Lord, that you have made it prosperous, and I pray specifically tonight for Mayor Rydel and all of council, Lord, that you would bless them, that you would give them wisdom, that they would, that they would lead by your Spirit, and, Lord, that, that they would lead this city to a very prosperous and safe place to be. Lord, we, we thank you for this wonderful city, and we pray, Lord, for prosperity for all the citizens. Lord, that you would have your way, and your name would be famous, and this city would be blessed. Lord, we give this meeting over to you, and we say, "Have your way with it tonight," in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pastor?
Pastor?
I'm, I'm gonna ask you for a special prayer for a city employee.
Absolutely.
That is very heal.
Yes.
Thank you.
And what, what is his, what is their name?
Miguel.
Miguel, okay. Lord, we love you so much, and we thank you for Miguel. Lord, we thank you, Jesus, that you are the God that heals, and that you are the God that makes new. And we pray, Lord Jesus, that you would touch Miguel, touch his body. Lord, we have seen you do miracles, and we know that, that that is who you are. So, Lord, we surrender his life to you. We pray for him and for his family. We pray for your peace to overwhelm him, and in Jesus' name, that he would be whole and healed, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four, call to the public. This is a time for the public to comment. Members of the City Council may not discuss item, items that are not specifically identified on the agenda. Therefore, pursuant to ARS Section thirty-eight dash four thirty-one point zero one H, action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, responding to any criticism, or scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date. This is called to the public. Do we have anyone that wants to address the mayor or City Council members? Este es llamado al público, y momento para que el público comente. Hay algo que quiera dirigirse a la alcaldesa o a los miembros del cabildo? Item number five, Proclamations Presentations. Item number five A, Proclamation Skills USA Week, February sixth through the tenth, two thousand twenty-three. Item number five B, Career Technical Education Month, February two thousand twenty-three. Now therefore be resolved that Mayor Nieves Raydell hereby declares the proclamations in the city of San Luis, Arizona, as read above, this eighth day of February, two thousand twenty-third. We now go to item number five C, Presentation by San Luis High School on their career technical education programs. Nereida Lansman, San Luis High School CTE Instructional Aid.
Hi, good evening. We're from San Luis High School, and today we're gonna present about this career in technical education we offer at our campus. Hi, my name is Camila Ruiz. I'm a CTE leader, and I'm also our Skills USA Region One President.
Good evening. My name is Raoul Rivas. I'm a CTE leader and the Skills USA Arizona State Historian.
At our school, we offer a wide variety of different CTE programs. In this year alone, we have a total of fifteen programs, which includes agri-science, business management, construction, culinary, digital photography, early childhood education, engineering, and welding.
Some other programs that we offer is film and TV, nursing, emergency medical services, lawn public safety, mental and social health services, sports medicine, and stagecraft.
What is CTE? CTE stands for Career in Technical Education. CTE are programs that prepare students for high-wage, high-demand careers. CTE covers many different fields, including healthcare, information technology, advanced manufacturing, hospitality, and management, and many more. And finally, CTE encompasses everything from classroom learning to certification programs, which is useful for work-based learning opportunities outside the classroom.
CTE benefits. CTE helps guide students towards a career path. It helps them find their interest on what could possibly be their work environments, and CTE helps reduce the number of unemployed graduates and the number of students who don't pursue any career after high school, meaning that students, once they graduate, can work while they earn a degree to gain more experience.
And now, we will be talking about how all our programs receive and are given opportunity to have AWC dual credit enrollment, as well as industry certifications that help prepare students for the workforce or post-secondary advancement. And now, we're gonna, this year, we're gonna be highlighting a few different programs in our campus. First up, we're starting off with film and TV. We have a new remodeled studio, the certification that this class provides as Adobe Premiere. Film and TV has received first place for four years consecutively in broadcast journalism and regional competitions, among many other competitions. In this past month in January, we went to go compete in regionals. Were thirteen of our students placed in top three. And this class is also recognized as a Gold Chapter Award at the state level for FBLA. As you can see in the pictures, our classroom is divided into two areas, which is the classroom and the new lab area. In the first picture is the classroom area. For film and TV, we're divided up into different committees, and in the classroom area, it's extremely useful for graphic design, video editing, and social media. And in the second picture, which is the new lab area, is mainly used for SLHS News, which is a broadcast news we use at our school to highlight and inform the community about different events.
The next program we are going to be highlighting is Stagecraft. And Stagecraft is a program which prepares students to participate in the technical and management areas of the performing arts and entertainment industry. Stagecraft offers many certifications such as OSHA-ten general and construction industry, and OSHA- thirty construction certifications. Stagecraft is work-based learning, which includes strategies that allow students to go beyond the classroom and into the community to develop student competencies. The activities allow students to apply classroom theories, explore career options at the worksite, and connect classroom learning to work. And in the pictures on the side, those are two of the many plays that we have done at SLHS, which include The Little Mermaid and The Play That Goes Wrong. Another thing that Stagecraft has done is a community service for San Luis, where Stagecraft CTSO, students-led community volunteers, as they assisted in the haunted house for the San Luis Parks and Rec Halloween spectacular event, building sets, and as actors for the events. And on the pictures to the left, those are the students that helped build, paint, and act for the community service.
And now, we're gonna be highlighting Emergency Medical Services, which stands as EMS. EMS prepares students to continue their education towards becoming an emergency medical paramedic. EMS also provides skills to act in time of emergency that could save someone's life. EMS students then learn skills such as airway management, splinting of fractured bones, agency-taking respiratory emergencies, adult, child, and infant CPR, and how to take blood pressures and vital signs. And the certification this program offers is basic life support for healthcare providers. This year, CTE in our school has provided a new ambulance simulator, which helps EMS students put to use their skills, and is extremely useful for a more, a more work-based learning experience. And also, every year, the San Luis Fire Department assists our students with skills checks.
The final program that we're going to be highlighting is engineering. And engineering is designed to develop students' understanding of engineering problem-solving and design practices. San Luis High School was recently recognized by the ASU Helios Decision Center for Educational Excellence as one of the highest-performing schools in Arizona in the post-secondary discipline of engineering, meaning that a very high percentage of San Luis High School's graduates earn As or Bs in engineering classes at the university level at ASU, U of A, and NAU. Some certifications include OSHA-ten, Certified Solid Works Associates, Autodesk Certified User AutoCAD, National Coalition of Certification, and NC-three Multimeter.
During CTE Month, we celebrate different organizations. So first up, we have FFA, and the total San Luis High School membership are one hundred and three students. For Skills USA, there's a total of nine hundred thirty-four students. For FCC LA, there are a total of one hundred forty, one hundred fifty-four students. For HOSA, three hundred nineteen, FBLA, two hundred forty-seven, and Educators Rising, one hundred and four. And now, we're gonna be talking about experiences. My journey with CTE has been remarkable for the past four years. I've developed skills such as teamwork, leadership, and communication. I've also been able to create incredible bonds with people and memories I remember for many years. CTE is important for students to work on not only themselves, but their future goals. With CTE, I discovered I want to major in social work and minor in film.
My journey with CTE has been phenomenal for only my second year in my CTE program. I've learned so much through my program and Skills USA that will stay with me for the rest of my life. I've been able to travel to places I never thought I would visit in my age. I've met people and businesses from all over the country, and to me, CTE is very important for students as it prepares them for their future careers. And through CTE, I have been able to find a part-time job and start my career as a welder. And these are some of the pictures that I have gone through, through Skills USA and CTE, and all of them, I'm with my state officer team. It's us seven. We're pictured at the White House, the Washington Monument, the old headquarters of Skills USA, and recently at Camp Champion in Williams, Arizona.
And I've integrated pictures of the different events I've been able to be a part of for the past four years now. The most memorable ones I've, I've lived are Atlanta and Williams. On the bottom is Atlanta. I feel like with the CTE leaders, we built an incredible bond, and we also got to have a great community service project, which was building bikes for elementary school kids in Atlanta. And to your right side is Williams. Most of us that went to Atlanta got to go to this camp again, so I feel like we reconnected again, and I feel like our bond felt more like family, which I hold very dear to my heart. And in the top corner to the left side is where I competed for regional officer, and I feel like ever since that day, I felt like, not only because I won, but because I feel like I gained more self-confidence.
Funding for CTE. Thanks to the state and federal funding for CTE programs, SLHS CTE students would not have been able to have these opportunities, such as earning certifications, equipment that meets industry standards, leadership trainings, and many other opportunities. This is the main reason why we need your support and advocacy for education and CTE, which is why our government representatives need to continue supporting education funding.
Thank you so much for listening to our presentation, and we would also like to invite all the board members to come have a tour at our campus to see what we were talking about because of our different CTE programs we offer. And to set up a meeting, you can talk to our instructional leader, Nereida Lansman, and provide it. There is the email and phone number.
Well, first of all, congratulations. Thank you for being here and opening our eyes. Usually, when we hear about our teenagers, our young people, it's about bad things. This is what we wanna hear. This is, this is what will take San Luis to the next level. And I'm very proud of all of you. All of you, you opened my eyes. I didn't know that the San Luis High School has so many programs. I should educate myself more, and I'm gonna take your offer. You invited us. We should go and visit the campus. And you should be very proud of the work that you're doing. And when you go and finish your careers, come back and work in your community. We need people like you. You are the future. And can we take a picture with you?
Yes.
Please? Okay. Should we go down? Do we have somebody with a camera or our phones? We'll make it real quick. We'll take my phones.
Do we stay up here and say? Mayor, you will sit down up here, my phone, and they can get.
I went, I went, one with my phone. Jenny. Oh, stop, honest. Oh, my God, yes. Everybody. No, I, I, thank you, thank you. Okay. I think we should move a little so we can be in the middle with them. Yes, like this. Yes. Thank you so much. One more. Thank you. Please, please at us again. Very surprised.
Item number five D, Presentation of the Midyear Report from Greater Yuma Economic Development Corporation, GYADC. Julie Engel, Director of Greater Yuma Economic Development Corporation.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, administration. I am gonna go off script a little bit here. You don't understand. You're right. This is your future, and their program is outstanding. We had the privilege of touring, and I have to tell one funny story. We were watching students who were in the ETE-EMT class, and they were using virtual reality goggles, and they had a gunshot victim. And they were starting to do CPR, and blood shot out of that gunshot victim all over them, and they all three fell back on the floor on their backs. So it's good that they're learning this in a virtual setting and not when they're on the street really treating somebody, but it was so impressive to see the technology that they've deployed at the school and the programs that they're doing, and these are your future EMTs and firefighters, and it's, and all those accolades and awards that they receive. That is in the nation. Helios is nationwide, and for them to be recognized is incredible. So just so very proud that I got to be here for this and see this and know that these kids are amazing, because we, we really have enjoyed. So, so you're gonna love it. You're gonna love the programs that they have and the technologies that they're deploying for these kids. So, we're, we're in good hands going forward. We really are. So, I'm sorry. I will get back on task, but I just was so impressed with this group of kids. I do have my senior vice president with me today, Greg Lavanne. He is going to help out with the presentation today. It is such an honor to see so many new faces, familiar but new, on the council. And so, we are going to kind of do just an overview to refresh everybody's memories and to educate those who haven't seen what the top leading industry sectors are for our region. And what happens at our commercial port of entry is where all five of these come together. You have that ecosystem that supports all five of these industry sectors, and that is kind of rare, because there aren't a lot of places in Yuma County where all of these things come together so cohesively. So logistics and distribution, of course, that makes sense for having a commercial port of entry and having goods coming and going both, both ways, both directions. And the Maquiladora operations, we know that our foreign trade zone activities increased because of the number of operations that are happening on both sides of the border again. This is picking up steam again. We just met with a group from Tijuana who is very interested in expanding operations, working with companies, and having more Maquila operations. And they're kind of at capacity, so they're looking, they're coming further this direction with these expansions that they're talking about. Food processing, agribusiness, of course, is what everyone thinks of when we talk about food processing, but we also have a whole environment designed for food entrepreneurs. And with the investment in broadband, we're going to see a lot more opportunity for people to have online sales, people to start their own companies. We're now tracking the number of outbound sales that are happening from Yuma County, and it is growing year over year exponentially. So it's already starting to happen. We want to help make this happen further. And so, we are going to be approaching the city of San Luis to work with two companies that we have engaged. One is a revolving loan fund that doesn't have any kind of entry to get into their program. They are zero-interest loans for entrepreneurs who are underserved and not white, you know, the BIPOC community, the minorities. So they have no barriers to entry into these loan programs. We also have a banking program that is online, that is open to anyone for free, and it will help eliminate some of the predatory check cashing that is taking such a large percentage of checks of people who are working in the agriculture industry and other things like that. So we are going to be scheduling some time to come down with these two companies and talk about these programs, and maybe have this region be where these things are rolled out, because you do have the ecosystem to support entrepreneurism, and we're going to have the broadband that will support it as well. Then aviation and defense testing. Our spaceport is becoming a reality. We have our first meeting scheduled with the FAA on our application for February thirteenth. We are very excited about how this is going to progress. Even though the spaceport itself is within the boundaries of the city of Yuma, it is on the border, and it is going to benefit this region tremendously, because there is a tourism capacity that goes with the aviation and launching. And there's also going to be a lot of support industry that will have to be set up here. Some of it will be the fuels, the fuels, and then maintenance and things like that, that are going to have to be where these are being launched. So you're going to be a direct benefactor of this spaceport, and we're very excited about that, too. And manufacturing, Greg is gonna talk a lot more about the manufacturing that is happening in this area. And then, this is, oh, I'm sorry, it's a little, maybe this is a PDF. I apologize. We probably should have set it in PowerPoint. But these are the talking points that we want all of our region to be using. So we have shared these with Jenny. We have shared these with Somerton and Welton, the county. Everyone is using these data points to draw companies here. So this is, and these are the things that are most important to companies who are needing to find a new location. Number one being our available workforce. We have a tremendous amount of underemployed people, thirty percent. And the one point eight million people within this fifty-mile radius. If we didn't have an international boundary, this would look like your metro communities and things, but because we have to cross an international boundary, it's not as smooth, but it is relatively smooth compared to some other areas. So we're very fortunate to be located where we are. And then, we also have a very young population, which is so exciting. We just saw it. And that is very important in today's industry sectors as well, because so many of their long-term employees are retiring. We, I'm part of that boom, too. We're all part of this generation that is, you know, on the end of the career spectrum. So these are things that are incredibly important to companies when they are looking at where they're going to start researching. And so, here's another pool source of our talent, and we do have one hundred and sixty-nine thousand in our labor force, and that has grown a significant amount, I want to say about thirteen percent, from last year. Our workforce is growing, however, our unemployment continues to grow as well. So we are trying to address the unemployment by having more opportunities, whether it be entrepreneur opportunities, or whether it is new companies who are, who are growing or moving into the community, or existing companies that are growing. And Greg is gonna talk about some of the growth that's happening in this, in this specific area, too. So we have a lot of Marines that are leaving here, and we want to try and keep them here, because they have some of the things that are required for Yuma proving ground and our defense contractors who are located at Marine Corps Air Station, and that is, they have already been cleared. They have the levels of clearance that a lot of these employees have to have, so that's why they are so important. Our manufacturing program in Welton is doing fantastic. We have a hundred and thirty students, but it's growing overnight. And the programs, the graduation or the certificates and stuff that are coming out of this program are what is in high demand already. So when our companies that are here are growing, they can go right to these programs and find the employees they need. And that's where a lot of our job growth has, has occurred in the last five years, is from our existing, especially with COVID. Even during COVID, a lot of our manufacturing were essential, and so they were growing during that timeframe. So I'm going to ask Greg to take over.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'd say everyone tonight. So the slides before really allow us to get to this one right here. The information's really provided is our talking points, right? Our value proposition that we present to every company looking at our region. And I wanted to really stress that when Jenny and I and our other partners around the county are working with companies, we are not focused on one area. We are trying to attract companies to our region, and from there, they decide where they want to go. It really comes down to real estate. Matias and Councilman Rosales has seen that, real estate, and essentially access to labor. And so, what's really good for San Luis right now is that you're in a very advantageous position, because you are the next frontier for economic development. You have thousands of acres of available land. You have a port. Obviously, it's being built. You have an industrial park that's right now being constructed with spec development shortly from Chicanos Porta Casa. These are elements that companies are looking for when they're looking to make decisions. And ultimately, when we're trying to compete with other communities, we are competing with Phoenix, Nevada, Utah, Tucson, Casa Grande, and those communities are a lot larger than us. So we have to harness all of our assets as a region, and then from there, help companies to make a decision on where they want to go, but ultimately, they choose where they want to be. And so, some of these, these are some of the projects that we're working on right now that are, we've been shortlisted for in some form or fashion, and the first two are clean tech projects. They're gonna be located on County Nineteenth Street and Avenue three E, so essentially equidistant to Somerton and San Luis, and these projects are gonna be in excess of over seven hundred million dollars in capital investment, with over two hundred jobs they're gonna create. Average wages are gonna be in excess of fifty thousand dollars a year, and obviously, their proximity to your community is gonna be very, very desirable for your workforce to work there and not have to travel, travel all the way up to Yuma. Along with that, Rings, Somerton Manufacturing, which is Project Rings, they are located in that same vicinity. They are going through an expansion right now as well, adding on new production equipment. And so, they as well will be pulling from your labor force. I know right now, I looked at their stats, they have about twenty-five employees, and thirteen of those individuals come from San Luis. So I imagine that going forward, when they double their, their facility, that they would still be sourcing a lot from San Luis as well. Project Cleveland is one Jenny and I and the community have been working on for a few months. They are looking at Raleigh Field for their operation. This would be one of the largest medical sterilizers in all the country, and this country, this company is looking to hire upwards of two hundred people. They've identified the San Luis area as their site for location. Now, they're just kind of working through the particulars of engineering. They're finishing a facility in Arkansas right now, and so this would be their next expansion plans. So working with the airport, Jenny and her whole group to kind of get this project to the final finish line. Another one we're very excited about is Chicanos Porta Casa Spec Development. That's now at GYPA. I know they've, they've made an announcement that they are gonna be purchasing that land, and they have it under option right now. And that one's really special, because now, San Luis can actually tout that you're gonna have some spec development, industrial buildings in the ground that you can market to companies when they're looking at our area. Right now, we only have a couple buildings in all of Yuma County, and so being able to put these into inventory is gonna be incredibly advantageous for your community when we're bringing companies down here to look at our area. The next one, highly confidential right now, but it is a very large battery manufacturing project, and the company is looking at about a thousand acres that's in the vicinity of the port industrial park. They, we are working with our commerce authority on that project, and right now, San Luis and Casa Grande have made the shortlist for that project. At this point, no decision has been made, but obviously, it's good to know we're still alive. That project would be in excess of a thousand people if they were to land in San Luis, so. So a huge project that would bring a lot of notoriety to our community. And then Piana as well has made Jenny I aware they plan to expand because of some very exciting contracts that they've acquired. And so we're going to be helping them to bring in new equipment and along with that, grow their workforce as well. And then lastly, I put in here Panatoni Spec Development. That will be in the city of Yuma, but they're attached to a very large international commercial brokerage firm. And so they're working with companies that are looking to relocate from Mexico, looking to expand from the East Coast. And obviously, that, those kind of large projects will also benefit, you know, the residents of San Luis. But most importantly, we're working to expand the assets you have down at your port park. Moving forward, we are also working with the Commerce Authority and AWC on what the governor's calling their accelerator program. Governor's looking to do five, six million dollar workforce training facilities across the state. And San Luis, and AWC has been shortlisted as one of the community colleges to stand one of these up. If we were to be successful in getting one of this six million dollar accelerator, this will allow for us to do centralized training for all employers in our community that AWC would be able to spread throughout the entire Yuma County area. So we are waiting for final decision, but we feel very confident about our chances, and we're hoping that we can make a very exciting announcement shortly. And then the other one I think would be important to notate would be the Arizona Work Quest Grant. We've been working with them on that grant to essentially get two million dollars to help improve the healthcare offerings in our community. And so this money will be spent with Regional Center of Border Health, Y R M C, and other healthcare providers to get them the access to healthcare providers they need like LPNs, RNs, CNAs. So with that, I will turn it back over to Julie.
Thank you. And one of the things that you are excelling at is your home building. And Yuma fifty is a support organization for our military, and our military is at capacity on base. It is eighteen to twenty-four months before you can get into base housing. A lot of times they're only here for three years total, so for two of those years, they have to live in the community. You are one of the key places for affordable, available housing. And now with, of course, the area service highway, it makes it easier for them to commute back and forth. So we're very grateful for the growth and investment that you're doing in housing because this is a serious issue for our military because we're growing. We're still bringing in more squadrons. There's going to be a higher impact. Greg just ran an economic impact analysis for Marine Corps Air Station, and was it two billion dollar annual impact? And that is with the multipliers. That is not just their basin pop. That is what they're doing within the community. And so Greg already talked about the Quest Grant. We have two NSF engine grants. We're partnering with Greater Phoenix Economic Council on a healthcare. And NSF is National Science Foundation, and then we're partnering with the University of San Diego on the salt and sea brine or the lithium removal from the salt and sea, sorry. And so both of these projects have been accepted and are being reviewed. And we will find out if these get funded, this is enormous amounts of money, enormous amounts of money. And what they want on the healthcare one is even though we've partnered with Greater Phoenix Economic Council, they want Yuma to be the lab, Yuma County to be the learning lab and the lab for trying new technologies, new techniques, and getting more healthcare into the homes via virtual. So this is the program that the NSF is going to fund. And then the AEA ARPA grant, I'm gonna let you talk about that one.
So the AEA ARPA grant, essentially AEA has gone out for a very lucrative grant that would allow them to essentially do small business lending at a larger scale, along with doing some other high-impact projects and even low-interest loans. And so that one's very exciting as well, because if they're able to get that grant, then essentially they're going to be able to allocate a lot more money down to aspiring businesses down here, along with other businesses that may be a little bit more high-risk. So that's going to open up new opportunities for the San Luis area. So we've been working with them on that grant submission and help provide a lot of the data that they use for that. And they should be getting an answer with, for that fifteen million dollar grant within the next month or so.
And the CIC, the Community Investment Corporation that I mentioned about having that revolving loan fund, they reached out to AEA over a year ago for AEA to partner. So if AEA is successful, that might be some of the seed funding for this revolving loan fund as well. And so once we have everything in place, we really do anticipate this is going to help our entrepreneurial economy significantly, and that is for all of Yuma County. So we are here now to answer any questions you may have. We've covered a lot in a very rapid, rapid pace. If you have any questions.
I just want to make a comment, Mayor. Congratulations. This is amazing news. I think this is the most activity, traction activity I've seen. So I'm very, very impressed. Thank you for the amazing presentation.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
My second, what Council Maria said. So yes, thank you. From the two years ago to now, you guys have done tremendous growth. So thank you.
Well, we can't do it without your team, and we have to say thank you to Jenny, Ralph, and everyone who supports what Jenny's doing. Because, yes, yes, exactly, because without them, it would never work. So we could not do this without them.
Well, thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you all. Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Item number six, consent agenda. All matters are considered to be routine by City Council and will be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Item number six A, minutes of special council meeting held January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Item number six B, disbursements from January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three to February first, twenty twenty-three. Total disbursements, eight hundred fifty-seven thousand, three hundred forty-three dollars and eleven cents.
Mayor, I would request that items sixty and six D be removed from the consent agenda and continue to February twenty-second. We met with, or spoke to both contractors on these items, and we have some changes on their contracts we'd like to make.
Any questions coming through Council?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda and move items sixty and sixty to the February twenty-second meeting.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor? Signify and say aye.
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 All right.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Kay.
Item number seven, discussion and possible action items. Item number seven A, discussion and possible action on any and all matters regarding ordinance number four hundred and thirty-seven. An ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of San Luis, Arizona repealing San Luis City Code Section five point one, five point zero nine zero border area taxi vehicle permit and regulations and providing for severity ability. Glenn Gimbit, Assistant City Attorney.
Honorable Mayor, members of council, I promised the mayor to speak two minutes or less, and so I shall.
I request that.
A, a couple of years ago, we passed a, sure. A couple of years ago, we passed the, a set of ordinances dealing with regulating the use of the taxi stand right at Port of Entry number one. And we set up a system for special permits, limiting those permits to thirty-five to use the four parking places that are at the border. The mayor has requested that to be set aside. She believes very strongly that it should be open to all taxis who do business in the city of San Luis. So what you see in front of you tonight is the repeal of the one section of our code which sets up the entire system for special permits. By repealing this, you set aside the program and you would open up all four spaces to all taxis doing business in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions coming from Council?
I have a question for Ralph. So if this ordinance is approved tonight, do we continue to keep the temporary taxi stand where it is located on between Main, Main Street and William Brooks? Or will that be going away and just having all, all the taxis park on the east side where the trees are at next to the former industrial park area?
The one between Brooks and Main remains, it stays. But the one between Brooks and Second, we have issues with Fire Department. And I think the chief can better explain that.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. When this issue, when this was raised about the taxis, I did make a point that the taxi stand on the north side between Brooks and Second Avenue was, should not be used because as, when I, when we were up here a couple of years back, I showed a video when they parked on the north side, it makes all our units go into incoming traffic. And it makes it hard to turn into the port of entry. So that area that you just mentioned does not work for us. As to on the Main into William Brooks where the taxi cab, Fire Department does not have an issue.
Chief, do you have that video?
I, I don't have it on me, but I can provide it to, to, to you.
Yes, I remember it, but there is council members that didn't see that video.
Sonia, do you have the, the map of the location of the, the taxi area? So Chief, if you don't mind coming back up here. So currently the taxis, the current taxi stand is, is at the temporary one. And then we have the relocation of only border area. The relocation one, that's the one that is an issue for Fire Department? Or was it the old one next to the parking lot?
The one next to the parking lot right off of, on the north side of William Brooks and Second.
Okay.
Where it's designated east of the parking that, that doesn't have a, we don't have an issue with that. Or where it's located now, the temporary taxi stand where it's between Main and William Brooks on the south side. Right now that we don't, Fire Department does not have an issue with that.
Okay, because going back to previous conversations, there was an issue in the mornings when students were crossing and they had to cross the street towards the taxi area to pick, to get a cab and get going to school. So when it was relocated to Second Ave and Cesar Chavez Street in the middle of that area, students were crossing incoming traffic from Mexico. They were just, as soon as they crossed, they walked to the right and left over to, to the taxi area. And that's where they picked up the cab and took off.
Yeah, so that would be ideally for us, that would be great. I think Ulochio during those, that time, they actually paved and put a sidewalk to have everybody turn right coming out of the port of entry and head east to that taxi cab area. We don't have an issue with that area if that's where they want to put the taxi cab. But there's a temporary area on the south side between Main and, and William Brooks that I believe there's like four or five taxi cabs that can park there. That doesn't, it doesn't, operations for the Fire Department doesn't, doesn't hinge any, any problems for us. But the problem on the north side between William Brooks and Second, that, that's, that we do have an issue with that area.
The, so the reason I ask is because the temporary border taxi stand right now before was a drop-off pickup designated location. So if you were coming from Highway ninety-five, you took their roundabout and you were able to drop off someone there legally so they could exit to Mexico walking. With the temporary taxi stand there, we took away that area. We only have the one crossing the street. So that means that people have to drive around and come back to be able to drop off someone. I think that if we are getting rid of the, the, or, or getting rid of the ordinance or the code that we had before, we should also get rid of the temporary taxi stand and just continue to keep that green dot that is shown on the picture where that was identified to be the taxi waiting stand.
Which is the one off of.
Between Second and Cesar Chavez. If it doesn't disturb operations, I see.
Not for the Fire Department. I can't speak for police or, or public.
Because I know taxis park to wait. There's a taxi area on Second Avenue between Puerto Stas de Y and C Street that, or B Street, sorry, and they're parked there waiting their turn to turn into the area. And then once the temporary taxi stand is, like a taxi leaves, they take a U-turn and they go back and they form, they get in line in the temporary one after making the line in the regular taxi stand. So I think that we should just now move the temp, remove the temporary and have it as a drop-off pickup. If someone hails a cab in that area, then so be it. They can definitely do that without breaking any guidelines.
I, I will, I will tell you, I'm sorry, I will tell you on the, on, when the new port starts, begins construction, that south side where the temporary taxi cab will no longer be there. But I don't know if I'm.
I was going to bring that point up that what you're talking about is a, is a simple, is a patch because as soon as that GSA starts working on that, all that, especially with the green dot, that's going to be removed and the taxi is going to be relocated. When this ordinance was brought up a few years ago, and we've been through this, I think, in ten years. This is the fourth time this comes up. How many taxis do we have registered in the city of San Luis?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. When this new ordinance, well, the ordinance once implemented, we had a hundred and seventy-two taxis, and we currently have ninety-four.
Ninety-four, so it went down.
It went down.
And I know one of the reasons this was created was to provide some kind of control to the amount of traffic that's created and some kind of controlled chaos to the need for the residents for taxes. So if we, if we remove the restriction or open it up to all ninety-four taxis, and I'm pretty sure it's going to grow from there. That's an issue that we're going to have to figure out, you know, the traffic control, especially during the construction. If there's going to be issues, who gets there first or who's not, I mean, that's, that's going to be another subject down the road that we're going to come back to again as we did a couple of years ago. So the location of the taxis, I don't think is much of an issue because that's going to end up moving in a few months. We're going to have to. It's how do you control the amount of taxis or the traffic that is created? And I understand everybody's trying to make a living, but that's, that's the part that, the reason for this ordinance. And then we took it away, then we brought it back at the request of some of the taxis, and again, it's, and, and we're, we're unique. We're a unique community. No other city has this type of problem with their taxis. We do because of the port of entry, and we understand that, and we want to make sure that the service is there. But that is a concern, I guess, that we need to address.
I got a comment. Okay. I requested this to be repealed so everybody can have the same opportunities. Okay, I don't think any community, any city has the right to decide how many building contractors, how many realtors, how many taxis, how many McDonald's are supposed to operate in our city. I, I, I don't think that's our job to do that. I think that every single person in this country has a God-given right to make a decent living. And if we have fifty taxis, no, no, please, 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 let, let me finish. Let me finish. We should not be regulating and telling people, you know, you're welcome to come or you're not welcome to come. If they're willing to come and put their effort and their monies in getting one taxi, five, ten, twenty, which, they should be supported by us. And if they don't make it in the business, for whatever reason, and then at least they gave it a try. What I'm trying to do here is everybody should have the same opportunity. That's it. I don't have an agenda. I, I don't have taxes. I don't have relatives that have taxes. I just want to do what is right. Treat everybody the same way. Okay, that's it.
Mayor, if I may.
Thank you.
I, I, I also agree with, I also agree with, with everything you said. But just a reminder, I know that when this was done prior to me joining council, the story behind it was to try to regulate the traffic from the taxis and all of those things. But we also need to be mindful of, if this ordinance goes away, we still need to respect our, our rules for traffic. So. our rules for traffic. So uh, respect the police department. If they ask you to comply with something, if you guys are parked in unrestricted areas, it's not that we don't want to, but it is that they need to maintain the city safe. It's, it's more than anything that. Uh, I think we're all adults. Everyone who is a taxi driver is over the age of eighteen. So we need to be reasonable with our police department and comply with their um laws that they have to follow. So um, I agree with you, Mayor. I think everyone deserves the opportunity to be able to work in that area. But I also think that everyone needs to uh follow all these rules that are set in place. Not because we want to, but for the safety of everyone.
I mean, total agreement. We're all adults and it should be up to every single one of you to work together. Get to consensus. You don't have to like each other, but you have to follow the rules. Okay, that, that's all we're, I'm asking. Follow the rules, work with each other. Work with the police department. We are here to help. We're not here to prevent anybody from coming to the city and doing any business. So with that, uh, if there's no more comments.
Well, I, I just want to reiterate, again, I agree with you. We, we're not here to control how many businesses taxes license are issued. If we can have five hundred taxis, it's great. But we're unique to our situation. Correct me if I'm correct, Ralph. We're the only city that's allowing taxis to work, at least that I know of, on public right of way. That's the, that's the issue that we're having. How do we control, make sure we provide our taxi drivers a location to be able to pick up and drop off their, their passengers? We're not in the business of being taxis. They're parking and using public right of way to do their personal business, which was the issue many years ago. How do you control how many two hundred taxis waiting in the line to pick up a person on public right of way? It's not about that we're trying to control how many people are working and making an income. That's fine. It's, we need to figure out the solution as a council. Where are they gonna stage? And keep in mind, they're using public right of way to do their business. When, as a contractor, any contractor that has, they're not putting up their business on the back of a truck in the public right of way. This is unique to our city. That's why we need to figure out what best works to control this traffic. So don't throw it back saying that I'm trying to control and say we're controlling the business. I'm trying to figure out how we work this for our residents. Because our residents are the ones that use the taxis. We need to provide the service, but we need to find out where we're gonna put all this traffic.
Well, and I totally agree with you, but we have to be fair with everybody. Okay? It's called public spaces. All of us can use them. All of us, not just thirty-five Willy Wonka permits. Okay, and uh but uh, I mean, we are trying to do what is right. And that's it. So with no more comments, I want to change a motion. Okay, I entertain a motion.
Before there is a motion read again, I just want to emphasize, Mayor, that yes, it is for everyone, but um, that residents and taxi drivers need to respect our, our laws that we have in place and the police department because they are the ones that are out there ensuring our city's safe. And not that we don't want you to work, but we want you to work in a safely manner. So I mean, that's just my point. I understand Matias, I understand the mayor. We want the safety of everyone and to everyone have the opportunity to be out there working, but in an orderly fashion, not that people are not complying with the law and, and our law enforcement officers. So I, that's just, I, I can't stress that enough. I think that respect needs to be given to our police department. So everyone can work in a safely manner. And you guys can continue to uh provide the services that you provide to our community, to the people that come and visit from Mexico to us that sometimes we request uh a cab to transport us to the store, to our homes, or whatever the case might be. But everything done in an orderly manner.
With that.
Ma- Mayor, I'm still um a little unclear. Where are the taxis gonna be located, the new location?
Uh, they're gonna be in the same uh location. It's just that it's not just going to be one group that had already been.
The restriction of number of taxis that can be.
They, they're gonna be circulating. They're gonna be circulating per come, per served. Same location. And this is gonna be temporary because in June, July, the federal government is gonna start work. And then that's gonna become a big issue because with the federal government, we don't have a say.
That's what I was gonna say.
Yes.
That it's gonna come back again to us because we don't have the, the, you know, we don't have the
I think that we should.
Places.
I think that we should get rid of that temporary one since now if we're gonna pass this ordinance because it's gonna come back.
It's gonna come back again and and it's like not, not.
Well, if I'm, if I'm reading the ordinance, the ordinance is to take up the limited permits, the permit issue, not the location and and correctly?
Correct. Location of
That's, that's the city.
Of, of signage and stands and parking and no parking is up to uh the police chief and uh in consultation with the public works director and the fire chief, and that's how we've set it up. So the actual signage, parking, no parking, et cetera, will still remain the same. We're not changing the system of who can park where. Uh, this just gets rid of the border taxi permit system period and just make that system go away. But it has nothing to do with where.
The location or anything, correct?
Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you.
Mayor, I move to read ordinance number four thirty-seven by title only.
Take it.
There's a motion in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anybody against? Motion carries.
Ordinance number four hundred and thirty-seven, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of San Luis, Arizona, repealing San Luis City Code Section five point one, five point zero, nine zero, border area taxi vehicle permit and regulations and providing for severity.
Mayor, uh, before I make a motion, uh, I would just like to ask Ralph to work with the chiefs and uh public works director to strategically find the best location for them and to have a meeting prior to this ordinance taking effect. That way they know of what is expected from them.
We will have meetings in that regard.
Thank you. So with that said, uh, Mayor, I make a motion to approve ordinance number four thirty-seven.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Item number seven B, discussion of possible action on any and all matters regarding unemployment contract for a city magistrate. Kay Marion McQuill, city attorney.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Excuse me, haven't spoken for a while. Um, this is the employment.
Hey, hey.
I cannot.
Do mask, get, get very close to. Better, way better.
Okay, alright. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the employment agreement for uh, the Justice of the Peace, Judge Guerrero uh, as magistrate, um, brought back on to the agenda uh, for consideration.
Any questions, comments from the council?
Yes, I wanna make a, I wanna make a comment. I wanna make a comment. Uh, um, I don't have nothing against Mr. Derek Guerrero, but I think the city of San Luis deserve a, a full-time magistrate. But, but the city is not in.
Mayor, may we hold up?
Thank you.
Okay, yes.
Okay. Okay, my comment is that uh the city of San Luis need a full-time judge. The city of San Luis is not anymore a small little town. We have more than forty thousand, under, more than forty thousand uh, um, residents and, and the population is getting bigger and bigger. And so for myself, I think that we need, we need a full-time, a full-time judge. Uh, and I don't know what if they think the rest of the council, but that's my opinion in regard and and the uh judge.
Thank you, Gloria. Any other comments?
Kay.
I.
Under this contract, will uh Judge Guerrero be able to perform, do all the duties and move the docket as, you know, dictated by the calendar and the courts? Not by us. I mean, under this contract, the way it reads, he's gonna be fulfilling the duties, right? And and be able to do the job, pretty much.
Yes, he, um, I, I really don't practice in that court, so I can't say for sure, but I do hear from the prosecutor that is a busy court. Uh, but the judge uh Guerrero has expressed that he would have a way of managing it.
Thank you.
Uh, in another occasion, Josh, Josh Guerrero had covered the court before the city of San Luis had hired him. I have spoke with him and he will not, he will not let the city of San Luis down. If he's been covering five courts and every single one of them has been taken care of, beginning from Welton, there's a shortage of judges. And uh one of the things that we, that I wanna stress is not just a judge. We need a judge with experience of managing the court. We're so behind. We had full-time judges, uh, Gloria. They never managed the court. Okay, so um three people, we put a, a, a call and three people had applied in a month and they're all three out of town. And we need help in the court. We need to service our people. I in complete agreement with you. We need to serve our people and our people has not been served. Even when we have full-time judges, they weren't being served. I'd uh, I tried to find other solutions and it's critical that we take action. Uh, um, I, I know he can do the job. I know that he's totally committed to do the job. And uh, and uh, I don't see any that, any other way out. The court has serious problems.
Mayor, I, I don't appreciate you about, about the, a person that applied from outside of our city. We have some employees that have been from our city and they could do a very good job. I mean, and we, we need, I, you know, we, we need to have a a, a, a full-time job is not, is not good for the, our city.
Um, Mayor, I have a question. I'm having deja vu. We met about this about two weeks ago. Wasn't direction provided to open up the position? And in two weeks, we've had three applicants? Is that what you're saying?
We have three applicants.
So in two weeks, that's actually good compared to the position we're asking. I mean, if those three applicants have it, whether they're from out of town or in town, I mean, we direct the staff to open the position up. I think it's too soon for us to react and put this back on the council. So after we already discussed it in executive session. I, I, again, I think it's too soon. Two weeks is too soon to find an applicant. If you have three applicants, that's actually good. I mean, normally it takes four or five months to get a good solid applicant. So um, we need to have a full-time judge and I don't think splitting it up between two communities is gonna be something that we could do for our residents. Uh, I respect your opinion that you feel that the previous judges that we've had to three years or whatever weren't doing their job. That's your opinion. Respect that. But we're in this situation because we don't have a judge right now. And we need to find one for the city and we need to open it up and as we discussed, the direction was provided.
Okay, has it been two weeks or four weeks?
According to our website, the position has been posted for two weeks. We had our meeting three weeks ago on January eighteenth, when we gave direction to open the position. And it took over a week for the position to be posted. I was talking to Ralph and I was talking to Kay about the position. I know that I was working hard on, on getting the, the job description updated with salary schedules and everything. Um, and I mentioned this because I think it also goes into employee morale that we have them work on something and that we direct them to. And then two weeks later, we come back and we say, oh, all your hard work. Well, we're not gonna consider it anymore. We're just gonna do this. I'm gonna give my opinion at this time. Um, I think it would be great to have Judge Guerrero um in our city, supporting our court. I just don't think that it would be the best to have him as a full-time city magistrate. Um, I was talking to um Kay and Glenn earlier today. Um, for our conversation, Arizona statute allows us to have an assistant or a special city magistrate on an hourly basis uh and doesn't stop us from continuing to hire a full-time city magistrate. It, it doesn't give an award of a full-time position to Judge Guerrero, but it does give him the position to support us in the meantime and be compensated for the time that he is serving our residents. Is that incorrect, Kay?
Uh, yes, uh, it would have to be brought back as a separate item. Um, under the Supreme Court regulations, uh, we would have to write an ordinance that would uh give the power to council. Uh, council would have to pass an ordinance that would give power to uh create a special uh magistrate. And then they would have to be appointed for two years. And there would have to be a process in that ordinance. So if that is the direction, we'd have to come back.
Okay, any other comments?
Yeah, I just have another question. So, so we opened the position of, of, of the judge and the magistrate. But if we give a contract for two years, we, we tied, we tied with the, with the two years contract with Mr. Guerrero. And what happened with, with our, our precision that we wanted to, the way open it, we can get it at full-time?
It'll be closed. That's the issue.
Well, that, that'll have, that happens all the time. How, that happens all the time with the direction or council or not, but I don't see why we are here pretending to be court system experts when we're not.
Yeah.
I mean, if, if there's a contract and someone can cover and start, starting tomorrow, and I actually, I, cause I had a lengthy conversation with someone that has had their and I hate this word, but their illegal shade case continued because we don't have a judge or we don't have a permanent judge. And if we rather keep being mandated by the human superior court, so be it. But I don't think if the contract reads clearly that he will be fulfilling the duties and performing the docket. What's the problem with that? You have a, we're adopting a contract. If that's not the case, I'm pretty much, we have a legal recourse to to call Judge Haas or whomever of the superior court and say, hey, there, he's not fulfilling the duties as per his contract and, and let the legal system deal with it. But we are not supposed to be doing that. As far as opening and closing positions, we, you guys have been doing that for years. Regardless of who applies and who doesn't. And I'm a witness to that. So I don't think that that's a good excuse for not approving the contract. I don't know what you guys had in the conversation last week or two weeks or three weeks or whenever that was, but regardless of the conversation was yesterday, this decision is for us today to be right, to derive our residents, continue the docket, get move cases moving forward. I, I just don't see why would someone be falling behind with our court docket if it is mandated by the contract, if you read it, that they are supposed to be doing it.
Well, one of the things that uh, uh, council member of San Luis is absolutely right. We went in executive session, okay? And uh, me being new in the job, I should have had come back and called for the vote. And this is exactly what I'm doing. I'm calling for the vote because I wanna see what everybody thinks. Okay, uh, I know that what is going on in the court, some of you do not know. I know, because I'm the one that is getting it. And all I wanna know is, if you're in agreement or not, it's not personal to me, but I will be able to say I was not able to take care of this problem because the rest of the council didn't agree with this, which is their God-given right and I will respect that. But people right now are not going to none of you with what's going on. When a person asks for a day off to go to the court, and guess what? We don't have a judge. Oh, come back next Friday. And they do ask for another day off, and no, we cannot give them that service. And they do ask for another day off, and no, we cannot give them that service. And it worries me. And if you think that Josh Guerrero is the one that wants this position, no. It's me that knows that we are not fulfilling the job that we got elected to do, to serve the community. I can assure you, if you're worried about you're gonna be stuck with a judge Guerrero for two years, he can be two months. And I can ask him to resign, and he will. So, don't feel that he's not going to do the right thing. The only reason that he's considered doing this is because I asked him for help. Because he's not just going and hearing cases. It's what's going on in the court. And our hands are tied, because we cannot go and interfere with the court. Thank God. If not, can you imagine? But it doesn't stop people from coming over and complaining. And they are coming over and complaining, day in and day out. Then maybe I'm making a mistake about being a full-time mayor and being here 24/7 and taking all these hits. But I choose to run, and I took an oath to do what is right for my community and to serve the people of this city. And basically, that's my position. So...
So, Kay, has the Superior Court, I'm sorry, Mayor, can I ask? So, the Superior Court hasn't been assigning pro temps, or they haven't been moving the dockets?
They do. They, at the time that the position came open, they didn't have any pro temps. So, we have hired a pro temp. But Presiding Judge ordered us to do the contract. So, there is a pro temp in place now, under the direction of the Presiding Judge, of the county Judge Haas.
And that's the one that they provided? So, we have someone servicing the needs of the residents and the cases right now?
Yes, her name is...
While we search for a replacement as we open the position. So again, I don't see... Is, and I know we can't get into details, but HR's not here today, right?
When that pro temp shows up, we pay $550 a day, okay? And do you have any more questions about how much it's costing? That will be good for you to chew up tomorrow and get to the bottom of it, okay? Right now, let's call, I call you for the vote, okay? I make a motion.
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Yes.
We understand the importance of having our own judge. But as direction was given, we, well, I believe that this is not enough time. You opened the position. I agree with Councilmember Matias, where he says, "We've had three applicants. That's good. Usually, it takes longer." So, I think we're not giving the opportunity to somebody who can serve the City of San Luis. And this is what happens when, you know, the position isn't filled. You have to pay the pro temp. That's just the process. It's expensive, yes, but I think we need to be reasonable in allowing more time for this position to be filled. That's my comment.
I appreciate your comment. I'm calling for a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to table this item?
We got a motion to table this item. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Everybody in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose?
Nay.
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 I move to approve the contract as presented.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the contract is presented, and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have three ayes. Let's do it by...
One, Rocco.
Rocco.
Councilmember Maria Cecilia Cruz?
Nay.
Councilmember Thaddeus Azale de la Olla?
Aye.
Councilmember Matias Rosales?
Nay.
Councilmember Gloria Torres?
Nay.
Councilmember Javier Vargas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Luis Cabrera?
Nay.
Mayor Nieves Raydell?
Aye.
We have three ayes and four nays. Motion does not pass.
Mayor, I would like to make a motion for Kay to work on an ordinance and schedule a special council meeting, so we can hire Judge Guerrero on a special city magistrate position to serve as our city magistrate, and continue the process to recruit and hire a city magistrate while Mr. Guerrero is serving as our special city magistrate.
Second it.
We have a motion and a second.
Mayor, I have a question.
Okay.
Is this doable? It's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda.
It's about the position of the city magistrate, isn't it?
Well, we have a contract, we have a contract on the agenda, not...
We're talking about an employment contract.
Right.
It does say all matters regarding an employment contract for a city magistrate. So, I think that the ordinance would lead to an employment contract.
So we...
I think it's broad enough to allow.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Let's do Rocco.
Councilmember Maria Cecilia Cruz?
Nay.
Councilmember Thaddeus Azale de la Olla?
Nay.
Councilmember Matias Rosales?
I got me wondering what the question. This motion that you're making is a clarification, because she's brought it up. As soon as a replacement is found, that contract, that temporary contract with the judge is over? Or is that a two-year period?
It's a two-year period, but it would allow for two judges.
So, still be a two-year period, so, okay, so...
So, but you...
Would allow you to waste more money.
Yeah.
But if it can be an hourly, where Judge Guerrero would only be paid when he is in our court? Or will it be a salary, a yearly salary amount? Can we give it so that he's only paid for the work that he does? Or will it be, because I think that's just a contract agreement, negotiating the contract with Judge Guerrero? An hourly wage, or...
They do it already.
Yes, it could be an hourly contract. There wouldn't be any barriers to that.
Yeah, I think, I think his motion, I see what you're trying to do, but in that case, I'm gonna reverse my motion, and I'll say nay to them. Nay.
Councilmember Gloria Torres?
Nay.
Councilmember Javier Vargas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Luis Cabrera?
Aye.
Mayor Nieves Raydell?
Aye.
We have four nays and three ayes. Okay.
Thank you, Kay.
Item number 7C. Discussion and possible action on any and all matters regarding ordinance number 436. An ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of the City of San Luis, Arizona, amending and restating the San Luis City Code, Section 5.05.090B, and adding Section 5.05.090C on garage sale business regulation, removing the yearly limitation, repealing any conflicting provisions, providing for severability, and imposing a penalty. Kay, Marion McQuill, City Attorney.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This ordinance removes the four times a year restriction on yard sale. It allows for, well, let me just read it. It's a short paragraph. A residential location may conduct a garage sale from one day up to four days in a week, if those days are Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Garage sales are prohibited on Mondays, Tuesdays, and Wednesdays. Garage sales at a residential location must be registered with the city under our code. Registration is valid until the end of the calendar year, expiring on December 31st, no matter when during the year the resident registers. Garage sales under the city code are for the occasional sale of used or unwanted items, not for retail sales or business or home occupations. And so, those wishing to create a business or home occupation must comply with the zoning code regulations and apply for a business license. So, that's what this ordinance does.
Any comments, questions?
So, okay, right now, the current ordinance is four times a year, three consecutive days. So, a family could have 12 days of garage sales right now.
Correct.
And we're trying to take away that limit and make it open-ended, and they could have a garage sale, Thursday through Sunday, unlimited, every week, every of the month.
Right, as long as it doesn't, I mean, how much? I don't know if you're hard, or maybe you could...
And they only have to register one time a year, not every time they want to have the garage sale.
Correct. But it's prohibited on those certain days of the week, so that they wouldn't be able to...
So that we wouldn't know how to go check if someone is having a garage sale Thursday, Friday, Saturday, selling new stuff, even though it says it, but unless we have a full-time garage sale, ordinance officer going by the city, making sure people aren't breaking the rule, and having those stores and the garages with merchandise from downtown L.A. and selling brand-new stuff, and competing with our sales tax, collecting brick-and-mortar buildings.
Matias, I think you...
Okay, just want to get a recap of what we're trying to do.
I think you bring up a good point, because that was something I had thought about as well. I think we need to define a yard sale as in, I am selling items that I no longer use from my property, not items I am going to purchase in pallets and coming to store in my garage and sell as a business.
The problem with that is, how do we police that if they don't have to register every time they do a garage sale, and there's no limit to it? And then, that's open to opinion. You could tell someone, "No, but this is meal." That's the problem. We don't have the staffing to police that type of chaos that we're gonna be creating. That's the reason for the semi-control that we have.
It can get confused from your cell to a business, you know?
But who's gonna police that?
Yeah.
Well, one of the reasons that the staff recommended is that we don't have the manpower here to, every time that a person comes and asks for patio sale, it takes, it takes time. And it was their recommendation.
I've heard complaints from staff in regards to the process, and I think they fixed it, because before, I think it even had to go to the fire department to be approved, and the police department. I think we took care of that, correct? Right now, it just comes to the counter and have it. I mean, that's, we're here now five days a week to serve the community. That's what open Fridays do now, and...
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor. Yes, so all the yard sale applications are now done at the business license division. Also, we have a business license application online. Which they can only apply online, and then you have to come to the office, and we're just sending back the permit via email.
Yeah, I don't see...
So, the thing we, the recommendation, are we doing Thursday to Sunday? Is because we receive about 40 yard sales per month. So, if we remove that limitation, I don't know how many permits or applications we're gonna receive every week. Now, there's small limitations to the applications. That's why we recommended having Thursday to Sunday.
On the tape, but the days, the days that we're allowing, leaving it open-ended, that's gonna be...
Yes.
Yeah, that's a whole different issue there. I get it. If you're saying have it only open, these are only days you could do it, great.
Yeah.
I mean, that part I'm okay, but not leaving it open-ended and open it to the Wild West.
So, right now, if I want to have a yard sale, I can come in from eight to five to Ms. Leon, who takes care of the business licenses. I can ask her for a yard sale. I fill out the application. Right then and there, she provides me with my license to have my yard sale?
You wait about 10 minutes at the most? Yeah, we can issue that permit right away.
Because before, it was, they had to go get Mr. Usman's signature, and so we got rid of that?
Yes. Everything is done, just license division.
And how many other business licenses are we averaging in a month, besides the garage sales? To make it that hard of a workload?
I don't know. It's like, I don't want to...
I mean, one or two a month that open up? I mean...
There's a little bit more, but I don't want to say it.
I've been trying to say that I can even process business licenses myself if I wanted to. It was one of just the lame excuses to do the five eights. But what I do want to put on the record is the enforcement part of it, whether we have it or not. We're gonna let our code enforcement division and the police department do their job, and not because it comes like "comadre" and "el dinero del pueblo," and this and that, that we're gonna stop from enforcing the laws of them becoming a permanent business, therefore, competing with the ones that are...
Doing illegally.
Doing illegally, yeah. Or in county islands for that.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Just going back to the question and what Mayor Raydell mentioned, the recommendation of the staff came from, because we were informed that we will be given unlimited licenses, and... And...
Yeah, we open up to a one...
When that was brought up to us, the collections department, the business, it's only a one person. So, we thought, okay, it's gonna be a lot of work.
If you're doing unlimited, yeah.
Yeah, that's what we thought, okay, if at the end of the day, it's just a paper that they want to submit, and we want to make them submit four papers or five papers in a month, we just tried a way of how to make it more efficient, and we just believe, okay. But also, we needed to address that residents will not abuse that privilege, and they will start making a business out of their homes. That's why we proposed also to do the one-year form, where they have to read and be informed that if they do a business out of their homes, it will be in non-compliance with the rules and regulations as a way of preventing residents of misutilizing that privilege that council would provide if you would approve this ordinance.
No, I mean, it's still open into, yeah.
And also, we proposed just a fixed dates, rather than diversity of days, because we thought it would be easier to target and see, like, if the court enforcement is driving across our neighborhoods, it will be easy to spot who is not allowed.
I'll give you a good example. And again, this is not your division, because you're a number person over there. Even with the ones that we have right now that get registered, which is 12 times a year, I'm actually sometimes calling our public works, and you know who could quote me on this? Those people that are doing illegally, sometimes forget to go pick up their boxes and leave in the corners that says "yard sales" pointing in on our intersections. Again, that, that's part of the, little part of the issue. But if we leave it unlimited?
Right.
I mean, it's, they're gonna be putting permanent signs on the corners. They will. I'm sorry, I hate it. To tell you, they will, people will. So, in my opinion, it's fine the way it is. If you want to do that modification only from Thursday to Wednesday, you said Wednesday to Sunday? Which is great, because most people aren't gonna have one on Monday, Tuesday, because it's the beginning of the week. I'm cool with making that change, but not making it unlimited and doing everything else. That's my opinion on it.
Any other questions, comments? If not, I entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to table this item?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? Motion carries. Let's table it.
Item number 7D. Discussion and possible action on any and all matters regarding the purchase of two Huber Discussion and possible action on any known matters regarding the purchase of two Huber fine screens for the East wastewater treatment plant improvements. Manuel Hernandez, Public Works Project Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Honorable Council Members. Public Works is here tonight requesting, seeking your approval for the purchase of two Huber screens for our East wastewater treatment plant. Uh, the two screens have a lead time of approximately 10 months, which is why the screens need to be ordered this month in order to align with the improvement, uh, construction project.
Any comments, questions? If not, I want to entertain a motion.
I move to approve the purchase of two Hoover.
There's a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
We didn't finish the motion.
Oh, okay.
He didn't finish reading the mouth.
Oh, okay. You were not reading it? Go ahead. Sorry.
We have to for the record, I think, right? All right.
That is correct.
Yeah, we have.
Okay.
I move to approve the purchase of two Hoover fine screens from Hoover Technologies that exceed 3,335 to 3,335, $294,000 sent to Way Formal for purchasing procedures for the reasons presented.
I second the motion. Everybody in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Item number 7E. Discussion and possible action on any known matters regarding the purchase of a new ambulance. Angel Ramirez fires.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, Vice Members of the Council. Uh, this item, um, two months ago, we had an ambulance that was involved in a, in a, in a, in a wreck right, uh, on the way to the hospital in Somerton. Um, that kind of put us on a bind because we were going to put for the next fiscal year a purchase of another ambulance. When that ambulance got into a wreck, we got a quote, uh, the insurance adjusters came and um, we don't have a timeframe of when that ambulance is going to be back in service. They, they don't have a date. Uh, they had severe damage. Um, it wasn't totaled, so they are fixing it. That put us back down to having one backup ambulance. So that came and talked to finance and city administration to see if there was any way that we can move forward and purchase an ambulance. We talked to our vendor and right now, app, custom ambulances are taking about 30 months, uh, from the time you purchase them to delivery. Um, there was a demo one that, uh, municipality, uh, failed through, so they called us and say, we have one, it's available. Um, but it's available to everybody. They were going to put it on hold for us to see if we were going to purchase it. Um, we looked at the specs and it's exactly what we need. Um, it's a 3,500 model. We usually buy 4,500s, but it's a four-by-four. So with that being said, um, I'm here to see if we could, uh, purchase an ambulance, uh, this fiscal year because we don't want to go into the summer months with just having one backup ambulance. Uh, those summer months are really hard on our ambulances, especially on our ACs that we have to put them out of service and having one backup ambulance would hurt us, put us in a bind. The vendor did say that they would have this ambulance ready by the end of the fiscal year, hopefully at the beginning of, uh, uh, June. Uh, we're going through the Houston-Galveston area, uh, a group council agreement. Uh, the purchase price would be 228,900 dollars and, um, we would like to use the HDAC, uh, contract, which is a cooperative purchasing. Um, so I would see if we can, uh, make this purchase. So I'll entertain any questions that you guys might have.
Questions, comments, some council?
I have a question, Chief.
Yes, sir.
So the one that is being repaired is the insurance. Just going to repair those, repair, just going to repair that ambulance and, and then send it back to us whenever it's ready?
Yes.
Are they going to be giving a timeline to be held?
So we asked that, and that's where we have no timeline. They, it's at the shop. They're fixing it now. But even the shop says getting parts for it, uh, it's just, it's making it hard. So they haven't given us a time. Um, he, they said rough estimate maybe six to eight months, which puts us maybe August, uh, October range.
Who is paid for the repairs?
Uh, that was the, uh, insurance.
So I mean, if you're in a car accident, if they don't fix your car or if your car needs to be fixed, they provide it with a rental.
I doubt they have ambulance rentals available.
They can't give us an ambulance, but at least they should financially contribute to the purchase of a new one. Because if they are leaving our city without an ambulance because they want to take up the time to fix it rather than call it a total loss, then I think that the wise need to do.
I, I see where you're going with and, and to me, actually, when was the accident?
Uh, December, first, uh, first week of December.
I gave them credit for an insurance adjustment, everything to be done in a month. I think the issue that they're having is the repair shop and the parts that they need to arrive. So this way, by moving ahead, the ambulance we were going to buy in the next fiscal year, we're just probably going to get a new ambulance in eight months and have the other one up and running. But I see what you're saying, but yeah, it's an ambulance that, that it is what it is and. Now, I don't know. Do they give, I don't know the details. Maybe they give, like, you know, if you don't get the rental car, they pay for it, but I don't know if our policies have that per diem or something, if you want to add it. To answer his question, I mean.
Yeah, I don't know, Vice Mayor. I mean, it's, we, we can ask, we can add. I know Maria Subor has been, uh, working with them. Um.
I, I mean, just because I feel that it is their responsibility to, the insurance is a responsibility to provide us while we don't have that ambulance, but at least if they're not going to provide us with an ambulance of a financial contribution to the city for, for the time that the ambulance is out of service. I mean, that's just my thought. I, I feel that, um, that it's great that we're going to purchase this other ambulance, but I think that the insurance should also be held accountable, not only to the repairs, but to the time that the ambulance was out of service and I'm going to use it.
Maybe Ralph, I don't know your experience. I mean, and these type of insurance policies are different than the regular, what we have as there's different clauses and everything.
They provide coverage, not, um.
That's written already. That's written already into the.
Yeah, I think definitely we can, definitely we can go ahead and make the purchase because right now, like, that's a necessity, like the, the chief from it is explaining. But that doesn't prevent us from following that directive also and seeing if we can get some, uh, uh, additional funding from the insurance for the rental expenses or, uh, maybe there's nothing to lose and we can try. Yeah, why not?
Doesn't hurt to try.
Yeah. Yeah.
You don't find ambulances in every, at, at every rental. You don't have one.
There's no harm in asking, right? Like.
Asking to negotiate and. Washington come back and say.
But we'll try.
We'll try.
Okay. Any more questions, ideas? If not, I want to entertain a motion. Mayor, I move to approve the purchase of the ambulance as presented and not through the budget transfer as stated in the fiscal impact in this agenda item.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 7F. Discussion and possible action on any known matters regarding the appointment of one City of San Luis resident to serve on the City of San Luis Planning and Zoning Commission. Jose Usman, Director of Planning and Zoning.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Members. So on the meeting of January, uh, Luisa Arreola was appointed to the Plan Zoning Commission. Unfortunately, due to, uh, schedule conflict, she had to resign. So we have a, an opening on the commission. We have received, uh, five applications from Eric Gonzalez, Angelica Ortiz, Saul Estrada, Jesús Carrillo, and Luis Wizard. The applications are attached to the report. Can you have any questions?
Questions?
I move, I move to appoint Angelica Ortiz to the City of San Luis Planning and Zoning Commission with a term expiration of January 31st, 2027 to fill the vacancy created by Luisa Arreola.
I second the motion. Anybody in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Right.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jose.
Item number 7G. Discussion and, discussion on any known matters regarding the appointment of a City of San Luis representative to the Yuma Metropolitan Planning Organization. Ralph Velas, interim City Manager.
Councilmember, me or you? You want to address it? What? All right. So Councilmember Rosales wants to retire from this high-paying job. No, he's willing to step down and allow one of you to assume, uh, the role in that capacity as member of YMPO.
With that said, I, I talked to, um, I know Ms. Ramos used to be on the board and she was the chair when I took over from her duties when she left us. And I know she, she likes it. She's very passionate about the transportation issues that are happening in the county and and I asked her if she was willing to take over with council approval, the appointment to the YMPO and I think she said yes. I'm not sure. She said she was going to think about it. So with that said, that's what I would.
I, I would just like to make a comment. I know that in the past, they, they wanted Vice Mayor to serve on that organization. I don't mind if Ms. Ramos, or sorry, Ms. Cruz, um, wants to serve in the YMPO. I, I just don't want you guys to feel that it, I don't want to take responsibility for serving on the board. If you guys want me to serve, I will definitely do it, but I would be totally fine with Ms. Cruz also serving. I mean, I don't want to take that from her.
Yeah.
Um, yes, thank you, um, Matias. I do have a passion for transportation and I did serve for eight years. I would like to continue serving if, um, if that's a desire of, of council. Um, I would like to mention something else. Um, Crystal, Director of YMPO, mentioned to me that if they can also appoint an, um.
Alternate.
Yes, an alternate, just in case if I can't make an, um, a meeting, attend a meeting, that the alternate will be already on file.
And I have no problem continuing, continuing with that if that's what the desire or if someone else wants to do that. I just wanted to give you, give, give some other responsibilities, you know, other members and so forth. And it is on Thursdays that that meeting does take about four, four and a half hours long. It's, it's like, starts from one to normally you're at it till four o'clock and it, it does take a lot of time. So, and you have to be passionate about transportation. Otherwise, it's, it's not that exciting stuff to discuss and your staff is always there and you know, you know, they zoom in and that's when we need to, but it is an important part of our community. So with that, I have no problem in continuing unless the Vice Mayor wants to be the alternate, but it is, it is something that I have no issue with.
Any other questions, comments? No, Mayor, just, if there's nothing else, I move to appoint Maria Ramos. It's okay to be the Yuma Metropolitan, Metropolitan Planning and Organization. I second the motion.
Mayor, can we add to the motion to have Mr. Matias Rosales serve as the alternative YMPO, uh, member?
Gloria, is that okay? To modify your motion that way?
Yeah.
Okay.
So move. Second. Uh, everybody in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nace, motion carries. Thank you.
Item number eight. Summary of current events. Events by Mayor, Council Members, and/or City Manager pursuant to ARS Section 38-431.02K.
No news to report?
Um, yes, Mayor. I attended, um, the meeting for YMPO in place of Mr. Rosales. And in collaboration with the CS San Luis and through the memorandum of understanding YMPO and ADOT pass-through funds to target an origin destination component on the entire downtown circulation element as part of the renovation, uh, renovation and expansion for the port of entry one. Um, this presentation will be given here at the City of San Luis on February 22nd also. So it was a very important, um, presentation. So it, it'll, it'll be presented to council also here.
If I may add to that, Mayor, um, down the road, we'll remind you, but the transportation summit is going to, it alternates in counties and this year is going to be hosted in Yuma County in October. So if any of the council members would like to attend, we'll go ahead and, Chris or myself will provide you, or Crystal will send it out to staff to, to chair it, to everybody and, and anyone wants to attend to that to learn a little bit more about transportation stuff. I met this morning, uh, with, using the Port Authority hat, I met this morning with, uh, Consulate Lularios at the consulate in Yuma. Uh, the topic of discussion was in regards to the communication issues that we're having with the new military general at the commercial port of entry. Our stakeholders and the users are trying to make sure that we remain competitive and the hours coincide with Mexicali. So we don't lose the truckers going down there. So we met with him to see what he could do to help us on the diplomatic side. Uh, he's going to be here for one more month. Um, he confirmed that he is being transferred and he's going to be the deputy consulate in Dubai. He's going to Dubai. Yeah, so he's excited for that and he's been a good partner and champion for our community for the past five years. So um, the new one that's coming in is coming in from Canada somewhere. Uh, Dewey says something from Canada. But yeah, we met with him and he was very, uh, I met along with side with Gary Magrino, the Kokopah Tribe Representation, our executive director and got our point out and hopefully he, he'll be able to help our stakeholders, uh, do something with ours to the port of entry. So.
Anybody else?
Mayor, I would like to, uh, just briefly share that I attended the Forefront Ed meeting uh, with Ralph and Jenny as well. Um, we did have, uh, Mark, Marcus Carden, if I remember correctly, from Visit Yuma. Um, give a presentation about US visitor visas, um, and how they are working with mayors across, um, all of the nation to sign a letter to urge, uh, the federal government to speed up the processes on those visas for our tourists. That way we don't stop tourism in, in our communities. Um, they did mention different events that are going to happen through the Forefront Ed. Um, they're going to be sharing via social media the events, but, uh, coming up is the, um, Expo Agro Baja in Mexicali, Baja California in March. So they were excited to invite us and for us to attend. I, I will keep you updated, um, if the mayor continues to send me to the.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Item number nine. Executive session. Vote to hold an executive session pursuant to ARS Section 38-431.03A subsection 3.
Entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So move.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 10, motion to go back into regular session?
I make a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number 11, adjournment?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.